And Tom knows that. Um. That simply, you know, the we have some of the things out there through way. I can just put me on the table and. Why didn't you say no?
It's six o'clock. Thank you all for coming. It's good to see so many people here. I'll now call this meeting to order. Of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectmen. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of both August first, twenty twenty-two, and September sixth, twenty twenty-two, regular and non-public. You take a look at August first, first. I've read them over. I don't see any problems. How do you feel?
I make a motion. We approve them as presented.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the minutes of September sixth, twenty twenty-two, regular and non-public.
I don't have anything since I would be not present.
Wow, right.
But I'll make a motion that we approve them for discussion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have board reports. Do we have any board reports tonight?
I do not.
I do not.
Um, I can give you a quick update on CIP. We met with public safety, so we met with police, then fire, and just done ambulance. Very good presentations. The committee noted that the quality of the presentations was vastly improved and expressed their thanks. The one thing we are working on is, as many people know, with supply chain issues, it's vastly different to get quotes right now than when we were getting quotes on the ambulance. The ambulance products have been bumped out, and so the ambulance's options are being requoted. And so I think those are kind of the highlights of the committee. Did you? Is there anything new?
Last meeting and then.
And then planning board. I've had all the fun you guys. So, planning board. Met, um, the long discussion was the the largest portion of the body of the meeting was centered around the concrete gravel pit. If you would like to see, it's all on YouTube, but the the conclusion of that discussion was that if this is a project of community regional interest. And so when that happens, the notification requirements happen, so it's remanded back. So that process is going to need to start over with those new notifications, and so that's back in the hands of the applicants, and he will need to go ahead and work with our planning department again. So nothing further on that piece.
I understand another issue is the is proposed reclamation.
So that's a part of it. It's not a separate element. The reclamation plan is a requirement. And so he is going to need to do that piece. We did not address whether or not that was complete because he has to start over anyway. So my hope is that he will choose to engage a professional to help him on that. That's my personal hope. He has been counseled to do as such, and we can only counsel him to make a choice, and then he's going to have to do that work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, let's hear the town manager's report.
Thank you. Just like to start off by reminding everybody that this weekend is our old town-based celebration. We do have schedules of events in the hallway here and at Town Hall and other places around town. If you see them, like to pick them up, we encourage everybody to attend some or all of the events scheduled for this weekend. With that, I'd like to give a staff report. The town would like to welcome Nicole Syte as our new part-time police assistant. Nicole started with the town on September sixteenth, the day she was observing the work of directing traffic, and she will be moving up this week to be directing traffic on her own with a little bit of assistance through the rest of this week, and then she'll be on her own after that. We're we're happy to have her and excited to to see as we move forward. We do currently have one opening on the police department with the resignation of Officer Bowman. We've started applications. You may have seen some announcements for those going out, and we do have a few applications already at this time, so we'll be moving forward with the the hiring process as we continue to recruit for that position. And then it has not been released yet, but you may see soon. We're preparing to release the highway supervisor position in anticipation of a retirement of Scott Godson. We've been working on upgrading the job description and getting ready to to advertise that so we can have a smooth transition. A go-for-purchase update. It's been been a while since I've given you an update on this, but we have purchased and received the striker cot for the ambulance, the mechanical cot for the heavy lifting, so that that has been received by the town. That saved the town of Enfield approximately $25,000 by using those grant funds instead of CIP money, as was was planned. And then we've also purchased and are preparing for the installation of the electronic sign, which will be in front of the community building. We have received word that the sign's been built and delivered to the installation company, and we're just awaiting coordination for that installation, but we are expecting it to to start soon. Leadership Upper Valley. Again, I'd like to thank the select board for their recommendation. I did attend my first leadership Upper Valley class this last week. Already made a few connections and have started learning some things about the Upper Valley and and starting that networking process. So it seems like it can be very good, engaging class, and I I look forward to continuing classes over the next few months. Bridge painting project. I wanted to let the select board know I've been approached by the state DOT and want to make the public aware that I'm planning on entering into a work zone agreement with the state for the purposes of painting the bridge over I-89 on Eastman Hill Road. They're going to be putting some advertising and stuff out now. I think then RFP for the job to do next spring, summer timeframe. So we have looked over that. I submitted the plans to Police Chief Holland and Jim Taylor, who both looked it over and approved the plan. So I will be signing that tomorrow unless the select board does not want me to. Audit review. We've scheduled our auditor, Tim Green, to speak at the Budget Committee meeting on October fourth at six thirty. That that'll be the first kickoff meeting for the Budget Committee, and we'll we'll be giving an update of the budget review. Of course, they'll be organizing their board, and then we did invite the auditor to come speak about the 2021 budget. We do, or we're inviting the select board to attend that as well. You can only bring in the auditor one time to give that presentation. I'm happy to announce that the community aggregation plan that was voted on by the voters in April and amended at your September sixth meeting by you has been signed and submitted to the PUC, and also happy to announce that we are the second city or town in the state to submit our community aggregation plan to the state.
That's great.
We're awaiting approval on that. It just went in today, so we have until November nineteenth, so we could hear either before or on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, whether that was approved or not. This broadband update, and you know I'm on the Drafting County Broadband Committee. We're working on the Drafting County Middle Mile project, and we're putting the final details together to apply for an NTIA Middle Mile grant application for the $26 million project to put three hundred and fifty-three miles of fiber around Drafting County. As we do that, I've been in discussions with other committee members in the New Hampshire Electric Co-op about the possibility of a joint application. We've also talked with Hub sixty-six about some partnerships, so. Besides everything else going on down, that's been keeping me a little bit busy trying to trying to wrap up that that grant application. And then with that, I will be meeting with Comcast as well. Within the next week, they're putting in some grant applications for expansion of broadband in Enfield, and I continue to support any project that expands high-speed internet and broadband here in Enfield.
Right.
That's all I have for my town manager's report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, we probably should do this, and we're five minutes ahead of schedule.
So, we have some procedures for the discussion up and coming for the public hearings. Due to the turnout for this meeting, the board will limit comments to two minutes for each person. Once everyone has had a chance to speak, the select board may allow the opportunity to offer new comments or questions, again, limited to two minutes. Repetitive comments will not be allowed. Questions on that? Thank you.
Go further down.
Go ahead and get a view of the smaller items out of the way.
Yeah, I can't really begin this till six fifteen, so.
You mentioned the fire department one? Sound appropriate?
I think it would be appropriate.
Fire department surplus equipment. Good choice.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Select men declare surplus of the following fire department equipment. There are four items that will be listed as surplus and offered on govdeals.com. One is the old ambulance box that was removed to create forestry one. Two is a water spray unit that was previously installed on the Jeep forestry unit that has been gone for approximately six years. Three is engine four that has been replaced by our new engine one. Four is nineteen eighty-seven forestry brush truck, which will be replaced by newly created forestry one. All of these items were discussed during CIP and budget meetings that they would be taken from services new or replacement equipment was put into service.
Sure. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Call your friends.
Yeah. Go to govdeals.com.
We've done very well with that, and that's. Want to talk about the face covering, bud? How about Tom eating location? That one's easy.
Oh, twenty twenty-three town meeting location for the twenty twenty-three municipal calendar. Who's going to be speaking for this?
We typically notice where the meeting is going to take place if you have any clue. And so if you want to decide where to have it, that would be great. We can get it in the calendar. I do have the Enfield Village School gym reserved. The high school auditorium is not available, so that is not an option. And if you decide you want to do another outdoor one, I need to budget for tents.
I think the elementary school gym is the way to go at this point.
Yeah, no, I agree. Want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we set the two thousand twenty-three town meeting location to be the Enfield Village School gym.
Second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
And that is the business meeting portion, not the voting, which is at the community building.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, the community building seemed to work very well for the voting process. And it was, you know, a fairly busy primary day.
And we're getting, we're getting takeout. Twenty twenty minutes, right?
Yeah. Let's be patient for two minutes. And at six fifteen, we'll start up again.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
For our town manager, or any of you. What is the community aggregation plan?
It was voted on in town meeting. It's a plan where we can work. We're probably going to work with Community Power of New Hampshire to put together electric rates.
The electric grid?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Six fourteen. Yes.
I have a question for town manager on the recent departure of the police officer. Was he under contract when he left?
We worked with him and released him from his contract.
It is six fifteen. The Board of Select will hold four public hearings in succession. Hearing number one. Did I read all four of these or just go one by one, you think?
One by one.
Okay, hearing number one.
We do the first two. They signed the government.
To discuss and take action on the proposed purchase of land located at the Shaker Hill Granite site on U.S. Route four for the purpose of constructing the public safety building approved at the twenty twenty-two town meeting. In relation to that, hearing number two, to discuss and take action on the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds awarded the town in the amount of $474,349. Ed, you want to say something about these?
Yes, um, starting with number one. We've been talking since a little bit before town meeting about the possibility of buying the the Shaker Hill Granite land in front of Shaker Hill Granite there. We don't have an exact acreage yet. I've been working with Rob, and, you know, we've we've agreed on a $500,000 purchase price, but that line can move based based on our needs as we move forward with the public safety building. So we're we're looking at that. As you may know, that we were approached by Bob LaCroix about four acres of land that he had against across from Connected Car Audio up through that area. I worked with Bread Loaf and the M-Back Design Team, looking at those those sites a little bit. We finally had Bread Loaf come back. I had a long discussion with them, and we we really started comparing that site of Bob LaCroix's to the to the school district site that we looked at. They're both approximately 500 feet off the road. Very similar infrastructure needs, so they use those to kind of gauge the pricing. I did put this in your packet here, but if you see that, they estimated for Site One, which was the school site, they carried $500,000 to bring the road and utilities and budgeted $1.2 million in site development for a total cost of $1.7 million for that site to be fully developed. Site two, looking at the donated site. It would be very similar cost, though other concern that we had, and I I have a picture if you guys want to see it, or if you drive by, you can look, but looking up that road, you can see the cattails and and signs of wetlands. So they're they were concerned that the permitting cost may exceed that $1.7 million by the time we got all said and done. Besides the the time and then having to clear that site where the school site was for the most part cleared, we know we had some ledge there, but there was some clearing. And then Site three was the Shaker Hill site. Looking at costs there. It would take much less development to put it together. Roughly $200 an acre is what they said is is kind of the ballpark figure, so they were estimating around $700,000, but wanted to be conservative and budget 900,000 on Site three. So if you added that with the $500,000, if they estimated that it still would come in in that three to $500,000 cheaper purchasing the site than it would accepting the donated site. With that information and a little bit of other discussion, we talked sightlines was a big thing. The donated site is right after a hill, so the sightline's not really good if you're looking to the east. We do still have some possible sightline issues at Granite Hill, but Route four, and you know, it's fairly hilly up and down, so there's not many really clear sights along that. So with those, with that information, working with the M-Back Design Team, they unanimously recommended to the select board that we move forward with the purchase of the Shaker Hill Granite site. So I don't know if you want to stop there and talk about that part, or. I didn't.
I'm fine with moving on. Other questions? The public at this time? Yes.
Would you go over the total cost now of what we voted for in town meeting, cost of acquisition and cost of development of the land?
Yeah, we voted on site preparation and and building of the land for the $7.2 million. It was stated clearly at town meeting that that did not include the purchase price of land either at the school site or the Shaker Hill Granite site, which we did talk about at town meeting.
Just a quick reminder, people can say their names for our minute time. And I believe that was Adam McLaughlin.
So if we talk about the the ARPA funds, I wanted to to get into this a little bit. We've talked a little bit at this table about the possibility of of using the ARPA funds to purchase some items from the CIP list, which would give us the ability to use some of those CIP funds to purchase the Shaker Hill Granite land. I have had discussions about this type of topic with NHMA, with our attorney, and with the Treasury a little bit on some webinars, and talked about using ARPA funds for governmental costs and then using any savings from that to do other purchases that are not by ARPA. The one thing we can do to fund the Shaker Hill Granite site is to use CIP funds to purchase that site and then use ARPA funds to offset those costs by purchasing an ambulance, police cars, BPW trucks, and things coming up. So really, it would be a a trade of money there. There we'd be about $26,000 short, so we would need to use $26,000 of CIP funds. That would not be reimbursed by ARPA. It may be a good idea to use those funds for that anyway, so as we have this public hearing, talking about using those funds, or that would be would be a good thing. I don't know if you've you have any questions on that. I did, talking with NHMA, they said we could do it kind of the same way, using budget money from this year or next year, and then offsetting the budget money with ARPA, say, paying police salaries, something like that, to save the $500,000. I brought it forward using the CIP because I thought it was a lot more transparent. It's a cleaner process. It's really easy to show in the books and to the public. And like I said, I did have a long discussion with the attorney and talked with DRA at the state about our warrant article and whether these funds could be used for the purchase of land, since the article was written for the use of infrastructure and buying and maintaining town infrastructure that they they all thought that it did qualify as a CIP CIP item that could be used. With that, we also agreed, speaking with DRA and the attorney, that it would be good not only to talk to the select board about this process, but to talk to the CIP committee and the trustee of trust funds. I did attend the CIP meeting and trustee of trust funds meetings and discussed this option, and they they all understood and were accepting moving forward and using CIP funds for this process.
I guess my question is, how will it be accounted for? How will we make sure we're tracking the 474 from the CIP for, you know, those purchases?
Yeah, I think that'll be pretty easy. We separated ARPA out in our accounting software, so we have an ARPA bond as if it's a full grant, so we track every penny like we would in a grant process, so we know where it was spent and what it was spent on. We need that for auditing purposes for the ARPA money anyway.
So it'll be aligned within the budget worksheets that we see tracking that.
Would it be in the monthly?
So it'll be. So I just want to make sure it's very easy for people to see. You know, we got 474. We spent 250, you know, and these are the items that were.
Total transparency. Absolutely. Ed, you're on CIP.
Yes, I am. I just want to speak to this because I thought Ed did a very good job of explaining to us, and I was the one who pushed back on more than anybody else. Understand the way the CIP was originally established was for capital equipment, and they told me infrastructure. What I really, the way I came out of that is that we're going to take CIP funds to buy the land, but they're going to be technically, not technically, but actually replaced by the ARPA funds. Technically, we're not taking the CIP money, the CIP money that would be used to buy the capital equipment. We'll use the ARPA funds to do that.
And we're 26,000 just. Right. Can that come from the potential budget surplus at the end of the year?
It could.
I mean, we talked a lot about surplus, so I I just want to be open to that idea. Perhaps we don't book that 26,000 to the IP. Perhaps we have a conversation about what would be our best financial choices.
Yeah, and we could we could do that, or depending on what the surplus is, we could we could use more of the surplus.
This is an accounting transaction at the end of the day.
Yes.
I mean, it's not a very exciting thing, but it kind of, sorry, it kind of goes, it's just not fun.
Ceiling.
Yes, um, I'd like to speak to this swapping of funds. We vote on each one of those capital improvements we not every year, and we did not vote for the the $500,000 to be taken from the CIP. I have a problem with what we what we hear at these meetings and public hearings, and we come here, we find you, you're all being switched around. I I really don't like that, but that's come here or there. The other thing, you're purchasing land, and there's been no work done on the land. You have not done any testing on it. You don't know what you're sitting on, and the same thing happened with the school. That's they, after you did that, now we've got all the things wrong. Why? It's not good because you got to put so much into the land, and I don't want to be a taxpayer and find out we got to go get more money because it's got something wrong with it. And I think we should not, we should stop doing and put money out for before the, you know, the cart before the horse, and we keep doing that over and over, and then you come back and you ask us for money. So that's, you know, I just don't think it's good practice. And and Ed, you can say, well, okay, we're going to do that. However, it's each meeting, I've been to a lot of them. I'm promised you're going to get the funding, you're going to get the rates, you're going to get this. This is all going to be good, but no, you're not. You're back at our money that we voted on, just switch it around, and the ARP, ARP, whatever it is, was going to be for maybe for the sewer, you know? Those are infrastructure, but now we're stopping that, and we're going to go for home. Too soon.
Thank you. It's two minutes.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Um, excuse me. So there's been a, the yellow light's been on for quite a while. I think there's someone online who wishes to speak.
Susan Brown.
Susan Brown?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
There's a third piece of land down there where those people were going to sell mobile homes that's going on the market near McConnell Road, and it's flat, and I just wondered if it's something you've looked at. And because it looks like a nice, big, flat piece of land.
Yes, I can speak to that. During the original M-Back investigation, we looked at probably ten pieces of land around town, including that one. The challenge with that one is that it is in a floodway, meaning in order to meet whatever the floodway requirements are, I think we would have to add like two to three feet of fill before you could build. two to three feet of fill before you could build outside of the floodway. Uh, and those costs made it cost prohibitive to use that piece of land for this purpose.
Thank you.
Do we turn that yellow light off now? Uh, I think Steve Patton had his hand up, didn't he?
Yes. Steve Patton. So, when we voted for CIP, you're set on, it was my understanding that this was supposed to be for vehicles only. I think you probably have your mind made up that you're going to buy this property from Moss. And I would suggest that when this is purchased, you purchase everything he has and not just what needs to fit on the building. Because I know that this piece of property, I wish they had more.
Thank you. So Nell's had her hand up. Yes, ma'am. If you give us your name.
Hi, I'm Madam Johnson and I have, uh, two questions. One is, what about, uh, I had sort of understood that somehow the sale of the land from Shed Street was going to somehow make up for this or that, that that was going to be money coming into the coffers. Um, and I'd like to know what's happened to that project. And two, um, you say, you know, this other piece of land, significant costs. Um, I would like to have some numbers for those. We've had some other serious numbers. You know, you said this is going to cost 500 and that's going to be another 200. What does substantial costs mean? I'd like to, I think we need to see numbers before we just say, oh, it's going to cost a lot.
We'd have to go back to the minutes from the MFACT meet, um, minute, meetings to remind myself what those numbers were. You know, there's others here who were on that. I don't know if anyone remembers what, what the estimates were for those, sites off the top of their head. I, I don't remember, but they are in the meeting minutes from those, those meetings. Who was the first?
The Shed Street right here.
So the, the MFACT did recommend that the town pursue selling that property. And certainly when, but you can't tie that sale to another property. And the town is in the middle of doing the due diligence and work needed to pursue that.
Yeah, late this period, we completed our phase two environmental study. The results of that study came back that there were two places on the property that the environmental engineers wanted us to do some further research and some further digging. We were waiting for regional planning to see if they got some brownfield money to help complete that. And they did not get money this year for that. So that's something that we'll have to budget for to, to keep doing the, the brownfield studies on oil contamination on that property. So we are continuing to move forward. We're looking at some other possibilities of what we may be able to do with that Shed Street property and selling it in the future. And that money will come back to the town.
Steve, did you ever hand that?
I just, uh, on the Raphael's property, they're talking about the MFACT. So the thing about Raphael's property was that it's not just a flood zone, it's a flood plain. And so what we were told by the state when we worked with that, with the committee was that it had to come up a minimum of three feet. But because it's a flood plain, for every, put every three feet you come up, you also have to come down three feet someplace else on the property. You can't use the, the land you pull out to do the fill. So that's why it's so cost prohibitive.
Dean Patton?
Dean Patton. So my question is, my understanding is that we, prior to this last town meeting, we already had a purchase and sales agreement with Rob Malz. Is that correct?
We don't have one now.
We don't have one now?
No, we have a handshake agreement that he will sell it for that for us.
I thought, I thought there was a purchase and sales agreement. So there's never been a purchase and sales agreement?
No.
So we are not obligated to him in any way?
No.
Okay.
Sir?
Bill Chase, um, I just, I have a question where we're talking about quite a bit of money. 300, 500, 1.2 million. And I'm curious why we don't, at least before we go ahead and make a decision, why don't we get some numbers and actually, put this out for a public bid and solicit, because both properties are going to require some infrastructure work. Why not get some real numbers on what that infrastructure is going to cost? And once you get, if you can get two or three people to bid on it, I don't know if Red Loaf is somehow locked into this. But is there some way to get some bids and get some competition to drive that price down where it belongs? Because that's a crazy amount of money.
We will be doing those bids. These are, these are bids from the contractor, not the contractor doing the work, but Red Loaf and those contractors that do this every day to say, this is approximately what it's going to cost. When we do the construction, that'll go out to, go out to bid and we'll try to get the best price possible.
Okay. In the public sect, sector, I never am allowed to give out an approximate bid. I have to give out a bid that I'm willing to stand behind and honor. And why can't we get bids from potential people that could do this infrastructure work? Now, one property may be better than the other, but you can't compare them. If you don't know at the start, what it's going to be, the cost is going to be at the end.
Can I tackle that for a second? Cause I, so I'm a supply chain manager by trade. So this is what I do, whether it be buildings or smaller projects. So, right now it's a nice idea to get a bid, right? And this is what I do for a living. You go out and ask for a bid on something that someone has no chance of getting. And it's kind of like a pie in the sky, this might be scenario. You don't even get an answer. Uh, and I think that's something that's very important because the environment has changed so much during COVID. And while we all have things we did as a standard where I sent something out and I expected a response, even our best people don't get a response. I'll give you a very good, very solid example of not getting a response. We have an overhang. You can look at me timing myself. You can hear it dripping, right? And it, we cannot get anybody to give us a solid bid on it. So I mean, that's the kind of thing we're up against in construction right now. And I don't think it's as easy. So if you bid out a multimillion job, dollar job recently and you have contacts that you a hundred percent are sure that will give us an answer, you give them that.
Can I?
Excuse me.
Thirty second revival?
No, I'm sorry. Uh, we may do another round after everyone's had a chance. Yes.
And point my getting, uh, it's interesting, only hearing here tonight. I think there's some good points that have been brought up to the selectmen. I think stealing from Peter to pay Paul, as Sealy says, I don't think that's politically correct. People voted at town meeting to get, buy this equipment, put it in the CIP budget. And now you're going to take it out because it wasn't enough foresight by somebody to put money in to, to put this building on a piece of land. They thought, they pushed the building, but they didn't have the place to put it. And in saying that, I were going to, I would ask you to walk before you run because the very building you're standing in. I was on a budget committee years ago when this building was planned. And the town owned the land and the building was seven and a half million, uh, $750,000. By the time, and we owned the land here. By the time this building was completed, it was over 1.2 million. So you don't have the money for the land allocated, set aside. I don't think you have concrete figures. So time is on the side, you know? The only emergency that was ever explained at town meeting on any structure of all the structures in town was Whitney Hall. Because you had a separate budget for that for a million and a half to do, uh, or 150,000, I think. Immediate repairs to it. So what I would suggest is, you know, and given the economy, slow this thing down. Get the answers that everybody's brought up here. Cause I think they're good, they're good questions. I think it's going to help everybody, uh, the board of selectmen, uh, and the, and the taxpayers when this thing comes to fruition. Thank you.
Someone who has not spoken yet.
I wanted to answer Sealy's first question.
Ed?
Possible. Um, on Sealy's first question on the testing, um, we're going to do testing. It's just one of those things that I don't want to do testing on with town taxpayer money on a parcel that we're not going to buy. So we're going to move more forward before we actually purchase it, the testing would be done.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Barbara Rule. I have another question about the supply chain issue and trying to get a 1.2 million dollar building built according to budget. If it takes five years to build, it's still 1.2 million dollars?
Well, if it takes five years, it's 7.2 million. No, it won't be 7.2 billion.
You're getting confused between an old scenario to build this building, which he referenced, and a, the scenario of the current building. They're not related. He was giving an older example of, of experience that he has.
Okay. So you have a million dollar land plus you're going to build on it. With given the supply chain issue today, do you really think you'll be able to build it within the, within the budget? And within a, in a timely, you know, within the next period?
We have bids from two contractors that we'll be talking about later tonight, that they will be able to build that within the budget within the next 18 months.
And I think there's a couple of things that are very important. And, and again, it goes back to accounting. It's not very fun, right? So when we look at things, um, you have this fabulous thing in towns, municipalities and school districts, um, called fund accounting, right? So if you guys are, have any kind of business, you're doing financial accounting. Fund accounting is not the same animal. It's, I consider it to be considerably less fun. What they are talking about with this accounting convention is the way we are moving funds. We're not saying we're not going to buy the ambulance. So Ed might have to offer a brief fund accounting tutorial. Cause it is, it is complicated, right? But at the end of the day, we're going to be making a commitment to do what we said we're going to do. What's important to know too, is that when you bid these out, you aren't asking for the absolute last penny. There's a, a contingency built in to every bill. And I think we as selectmen have already charged the town manager's office with coming in within that budget. And I personally am going to be like, you don't be coming back for more.
Oh, first I want to find out if, does anyone who hasn't spoken wish to speak? Okay, Sealy, stop it.
Yes.
We have a ten minute.
I'm just concerned about the lack of sites. I mean, one, don't even build the eight bridge yet. I mean, how can we do this without real concrete back? And I'm not saying spend $50,000 in and do, you know, test drilling and all that, but we should have some more concrete information. That information should be available to all.
Yeah, I can tell you it'll be between three and 3.5 acres, just depending on the little bit of line. It's about three acres where Rob would like the line to be, but he did say if the final design of the building needed to take a little bit, he would be hoping that.
Now, Sealy?
Yes. Hey, I'm, you know, you're talking like the school district in the funding call for government. And the people, it's important for the people to vote on these things and see if they're not for, not for our government. Our people at the selectmen just do what you're planning on doing. It's not the way it works. And I think the people in this town will be very upset that this goes through, how you're going to take this out of the CIP. Why have it? Why have it if you're going to do this?
I wasn't speaking to that. I was talking about the actual accounting conventions, which we are required by law to do. We have an auditor and we don't have choices about whether we comply, comply with accounting rules.
Talking about the government, people that live in this town, vote on our.
Shirley?
Shirley Green. As mentioned, we had one factor given us a price and they can complete it within 18 months. Well, and we've also had Red Loaf compare pieces of land, seeing which one could be the best one to build on. And we should move forward. We have that information. Can't get exact numbers for something like that unless you're, it's, it's just impossible. But we have very fluid numbers that show hundreds of thousands of dollars difference between the land. If we put this on a year or two, it's going to cost much more to do the building itself. So we're going to lose a lot of money there and time. So it's very important to think about that.
Unless there's, there is.
I'm sorry, it's Ed McLaughlin. I hate to do this, but Steve Patton brought up a good point. And I brought up the fact that when I was on CIP, I thought CIP was more equipment. And I corrected, it's more infrastructure also. But Sealy brought up a point, and Sealy and I very seldom agree on this. And she brought up a point is that we vote on CIP at town meeting. We voted on each one of these capital expenditures. We did not vote on this land purchase. I think that's a valid point. We did not vote approved at town meeting the land purchase.
Can I just ask you a question that I understand? So when we vote on CIP, there's a package and there's a list, a proposed item, but I think the funding falls to.
Vote, yeah, we're voting on the, the purchase of individual equipment, but the select board has authority to dispense CIP money.
Thank you.
Sir, you have not spoken yet.
I am highly, actually, the only thing we vote on at town meeting is stuff that we're going to finance. It's in the program as to what we're going to do, but the only thing you have to actually vote on is anything that's going to be bonded or you're going to do for a loan. Right to expense the money is to the select group. CIP is only an advisory committee.
Thank you.
Speaking as the chairman of CIP.
Dean Patton?
Just one last comment or question for Ed. And I think this is what the people are sort of being a little riled about is it feels like switching and swapping stuff around. I understand the logic of it because I've worked with budgets at town and school districts, but, so my question is just to make it very clear to everyone. So you're saying that the ARPA funds cannot purchase that piece of property?
I think technically they could. There's a lot of red tape and costs and other things that are associated with that. Talking with the US Treasury, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, they said the right way to do this is to purchase governmental items such as ambulances, police cars, fire trucks with ARPA funds, and then use any savings within the town. For instance, so I chose the CIP because I thought it was a cleaner, more precise, more transparent process. Then grabbing a little bit from different places all throughout the budget to try to purchase. Want to make it as clean and easy as possible. So people understand what happened.
Okay, I'm going to entertain one last question.
Thank you. Tracy Young. A small history note. In September of 2021, the town was awarded $479,000 through the ARPA funds. It was a select person's vote at that time to in essence, bank the money and save it for a future use. It was decided not to spend it on anything specifically at that time. The town manager at that time pointed out to us very clearly, there are no rules that we know of. We're waiting for the rules to come out from the feds. This was a nationwide problem. They did not issue any rules with the ARPA funds. They just said, here's a check. Finally, in about March or April, they started to come out with the rules. That's this year. So it got convoluted with town meeting. It was stated that we can't buy land for the most part, as Ed has pointed out, without huge bureaucratic stumbling blocks to buy land. That was not known at the town at the time meeting. And so we still thought we could buy land with the ARPA funds. It turns out we couldn't. So this accounting change is simply to achieve what was already talked about at town meeting. And we talked about buying some land at some point. We didn't know why. But it was still trying to achieve what was talked about at town meeting.
All right. I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. You want to vote on these first two items?
Vote on number one. And then that would lead to the, that are going to vote or discuss more are number two.
Do you have that motion available?
Sure. Uh, make a motion to authorize the town manager to work with RVM Real Estate Holdings LLC to purchase three plus acres of land for the future home of the Enfield Public Safety Building for a sum not to exceed $500,000 from the town's CIP fund. And hereby authorize the town manager or his designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Motion number two.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to use ARPA funds in the amount of four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars to purchase items that are planned to be purchased from the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five as documented in the Enfield, out of Enfield's CIP plan, following the schedule outlined in the plan set forth by the CIP committee.
Could you quickly clarify for everyone exactly what that is saying?
Yeah. Do you have a copy of it with you?
Yeah, I do. So we're using ARPA funds in the amount of four hundred seventy-four, three forty-nine, which is the amount we received in ARPA funds to purchase items that are planned in the current plan to be purchased from the CIP plan, following the schedule outlined and set forth by the CIP committee. So we're working through a plan right now. So this isn't to add things or change things. We're working through a plan right now that's been presented. The DPW is presented, the fire, the emergency services have presented, and we'll be moving over to the, to the budget committee, like for in town meetings of CIP's plan.
I'm not jumping out and buying a lot of extra stuff.
These are all on the, the book plan that usually see that has the binder ring on it. Um, the difference is obviously the dollar amount's getting refined, and then they've done a very nice job giving us a schedule year by year like we get every year with the columns and then highlighting what can be pulled out.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, motion number two passes unanimously. We have a third hearing to discuss and accept a special one-time payment of highway block grant funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents. Let me read this. As discussed earlier, the state allocated more money to the towns this year throughout the state budget. This public hearing is to discuss the acceptance of a special one-time payment of highway block grant funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents for the purposes of road maintenance. The stipulations put on this money are that they are to add to increase the road maintenance projects done by the town not to supplant already budgeted money. So as I read this, this is to do more, not to replace some money we might have spent.
Yeah, to pay more roads, to fix another bridge, whatever we decide to do with road money, but not to pay for the road that we already had planned to be.
And we have the plan that Jim uses. I know that things change and he comes back, but I'm assuming he's looking down.
Yeah, he's looking down his plan. With this money coming in this late in the season, I'm sure we will be looking to encumber these funds to add to next year's paving.
Yeah, that's my question. What's the timeframe, given the time of year we're at?
They're just, it's not a grant, so they just gave us money.
Okay, so we can encumber them.
Our, yeah, we're not gonna be able to RFP and get a bunch of paving done before the end of October, so.
And it would be better to group them with the next set of paving, so we have a higher volume of.
Yeah, if we approve this and we accept this money, we could go out to a, a midwinter RFP, which we don't usually get to do because of town meeting, get a little bit better pricing and have maybe some early spring or summer paving done. Or road work. I shouldn't say paving. I don't know exactly what Jim has planned for this money yet.
I'll make a motion to accept a special one-time payment of highway block grant fund in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents.
Public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Somebody can second that, and then we.
I'll second the motion, but we should have public comment.
It's a good deal, doesn't it? Always nice when the government sends us money. Yes.
Don't, doesn't Enfield, a lot of the towns get a highway block grant every year based on something in the?
Yes.
Something they do. Is that right?
Yes, we get a highway block grant every year based off an equation that the state has. This year, they had extra money, so they decided to give an extra block grant.
Okay, so they're giving the extra just the one time, not just the, just clarify it.
Other comments or questions?
Do you want me to make the motion again to make it a little cleaner?
I don't. Go ahead.
It's up, it's up to you guys.
Make the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the special one-time payment of highway block grant fund in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing number four, to accept and to discuss and accept donations to Mascomah Lakeside Park Fund in excess of ten thousand dollars in aggregate.
The amount on our list is thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Last place probably find a home and come motion.
That seems pretty straightforward. Make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars in donations that are listed to the Mascomah Lakeside Park Trust Fund with thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Gonna close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No communications at this time under business. The first item is a proposal for a beach on Johnson Drive.
Okay, to start this out, just wanted to let everybody know that this is the initial proposal and initial conversation for the select board. This has not been proposed to this select board at all. So this is one of many discussions I'm sure we'll have on this subject. And just wanted to talk a little bit about this, this piece of land that we have and a proposal from the town or from me to the town of, of what, what we could possibly do with this. So you'll see lots of pictures, but as you can see, um, from this piece of land, it's, it's a pretty nice piece of land. We'll talk about that. More, if you want to move forward. So a little bit of history. Um, this land was first offered to the town in June of two thousand. Um, if you go back to some of those minutes and, and read through what happened, um, by September of two thousand, this property was added to the two thousand one, two thousand six CIP plan to be utilized as a town beach. In two thousand one, at the town meeting, Article eleven asked for authorization to accept this and some other state-owned properties along the Northern Rail Trail. This article was amended at town meeting to include any former Northern Railroad property and to give permission to the select board to accept that property until rescinded. And then in April of two thousand one, the land at the end of Johnson Drive was given to the town with the stipulation that the lifetime leases for the MAPS lot fourteen, lots three, two, three B, and five were, remain to stay in place until those leases were given up or the people that had those leases passed on. Um, one of the things that happened this year, we talked, is we kind of moved through, but one of those leases had been given up to us. And then the A-frame, which we'll see some pictures of, and the prominent building on here still had a lifetime lease until this past April, late in April. I was working with Nancy Samborn and she, she beaded her deed to that cabin over to the town, which gave us complete access to this parcel that I, that I mapped out here. So the park area that we're talking about is approximately one point five acres. We move on. So as you can see, just wanted to add some, um, pictures. It's a, it's a beautiful location, already a park-type setting. There really won't be a lot needed to be done if the select board goes forward with this. And it's right along the rail trail. The rail trail passes between the Abutting Neighbors and the parcel. So it's a, it would be a really nice stop along the rail trail. Um, it provides much better accessibility. I don't want to say that it's ADA accessible because going across grass isn't technically ADA accessible, but it's flatter, easier to get to if you have elderly people. Someone in a wheelchair could possibly be assisted across to a picnic table or somewhere there where our current Shakoma Beach would be very difficult to, to try to get someone down into there and back out. So it's a, it's a fairly safe location compared to what we have. The proposed beach is approximately six hundred and fifty-five feet off of Route Four with onsite parking if we move in that direction. Um, Shakoma Beach is less than fifty feet from the busy intersection. Talking with the police chief, he's concerned that a vehicle will end up on the beach someday after some sort of motor vehicle accidents. Um, and then as we all know, parking is across a busy highway. We've done a little bit of research and we put our traffic sign out there a few times this summer, mostly in August. And looking at state data and our data, we average over four thousand cars a day on Route Four A. Um, looking at my notes, so I get my numbers right here. Um, if you break that down, just real basic math would be, uh, that comes out to about two point seven cars per hour or one car every twenty seconds. State data actually drills down a little bit deeper and we were able to get some timeframes. So looking at from six AM to four PM, they average three hundred and forty-nine cars per hour or approximately one car every ten seconds goes by that intersection. So, um, it's a pretty busy intersection and I don't see it lightening up anytime soon. So it's just something that we, we need to think of. I know there's been some discussion out there about what can we do to possibly make that crosswalk safer. Um, I have talked with the state and I have a, an email from them, but long story short, they would recommend that we either do away with that crosswalk there or we put the rapidly flashing beacons out there, the lights that'll flash back and forth with pedestrian crossing and to add overhead stoplights on each side of the road if we're gonna maintain that. So, you know, a quick estimation, and I think that was put out there, but it's just a ballpark. We didn't go get bids on this at all. It's somewhere in the realm of fifty thousand dollars or more to, to do the work to put those lights and crossings up there. With that, we move. If anybody's been out there, I took this picture so you could see it, but you can see the shadow of the sand shell that goes out. It's fairly shallow and gradual. I have been told that the end of that sand shell, it does drop off a little bit steeply, but, um, measuring that from the shadow and looking at it, it's approximately fifty feet out to where the, the sand shell starts to disappear. So you have a pretty long, shallow beach area that would be good for younger kids and people to play in. May not be great for, for deep water swimming, but, um, and I haven't. I haven't explored it as much, but it looks like there could possibly be some around the corner closer to that A-frame where it looks like it's a little bit deeper. Um, so what we kind of looked at, and I costed, um, using the help of PPW, we looked at, um, the line closest to the water, possibly putting a split rail fence to match the split rail fence that's along the side of the A-frame now. It's a minimally invasive fence, but it would be good to keep cars from being able to drive down. I've seen multiple times this year when I was down there, cars that were parked next to the picnic bench or closer to the, to the water. And we, we all know that that's, that's not good for the lake. It's not good for people to climb up there. So if we decide to use this as a park or beach, I'd like to put something there to, to stop cars from traveling too far down. Um, we did think it would be nice to put some gravel in that area. Mostly to help if we had softer conditions that they wouldn't be creating rust and those types of things. I know gravel can be considered an impervious surface, but I think if we sift it back a little bit and then we can also see there's about a hundred and fifteen, hundred and fifty-five feet of grass that would be able to absorb any runoff that would come off. Um, so this picture is just a picture kind of showing the site again, but it was also approximate location of what the cars would look like parked there in a, in a perpendicular type fashion. Um, depending on the funding source, we could continue or maybe even change the way that we charge non-residents for parking if we wanted to do that, to have a little bit of a revenue source to help offset any costs for our taxpayers. And it would also, um, depending on how we priced that parking, to discourage out-of-town visitors from, from frequenting there too much and would allow a really nice place for our infield residents to go. Um, there's another location there that we were looking at that's fairly blocked off. It would be really easy if we wanted to, to put a, a couple amenities there and be able to, to have a reserved location if somebody wanted to have a little bit bigger picnic with a family or something and make sure that they had an isolated area. Again, just another thought of a possible way to, to build some revenue and offset the cost to, to the taxpayers of Enfield. With that, I'll move on to cost of what we were looking at. Um, demolition and disposal of onsite structures were estimated at fifteen thousand dollars. That was estimated by an outside company, and it is based on just if there was no asbestos or things that they have to mediate. And looking around there, we don't see anything that we think would have to be that, but so our basic estimate at this time's about fifteen thousand. And that is if we had all the structures removed. The parking area that I talked about is estimated to be about thirteen thousand dollars. And then road upgrade, I've heard a lot of things out there in the rumor mill. All we had talked about was putting the grader over it to smooth it a little bit and putting some gravel out there. If we decide to use this as a park or beach, I think it's only right that the town would, could fix up that road and maintain it. Um, and then I added an eight thousand dollar contingency and miscellaneous just for anything that we missed or anything that comes up. So that brings a total cost of fifty thousand dollars. And to break that down to, to show a little bit more, that'd be thirty-five thousand dollars in material and the contractor to take the buildings out, and fifteen thousand of that fifty thousand would be PPW later. So possible funding options would be, um, either to use budget money, fund balance or surplus or the CIP funds if we wanted to move in that direction. We can do a partnership. I've talked to a couple organizations that, that showed some interest in possibly sharing a cost of doing that. If we start to partner or use grant funding, it starts making it a little bit harder to, to charge people to park down there depending on where the grant source is from. We could use private donors or multiple sources added together. Who wants that? With that, the only other, the couple other options that I came up with, whereas we can just keep the property as is with no improvement. Um, we would still need to move, remove the structures that are costing fifteen thousand dollars to maintain insurance on the property, which we'll have to do anyway. I didn't add that into the cost of building it. And then maintain access for emergency vehicles, which would still be a possible road upgrade somewhere in the realm of fourteen thousand dollars. There'd be no tax value or revenue that way. And then addition, I've heard a little bit about the addition of a conservation easement, meaning that this is municipal property. All that would mean is that it would restrict residential or commercial development of the land. But being publicly owned, it would still be accessible to resident, residents and visitors of Enfield. Um, the other thing we could do is sell the property. Um, looking at the home values around and talking to a realtor, we, we would think that the current sale would be approximately one million dollars. There was talk of keeping it as three separate parcels and selling it, maybe being able to get a little more, but that would be not compliant with our zoning. So that's something that we have to think about. We probably shouldn't sell a, a non-compliant parcel. With that, I just wanted to, to highlight, um, a few of the things guiding this besides the fact that this land appears to have been taken for the purposes of a public park or beach. Um, these are excerpts from our new master plan. Um, the guiding principles of the master plan was to maintain enhanced public recreation access and amenities for all. Recognize the important role recreation activities play in creating social ties and promoting. Recognize the important role recreation activities play in creating social ties and promoting economic growth. Part of the Mascoma Lakeshore Plan was to increase, increase access to the lake. Um, the resource and recreation section, again, speak to and expand and diversify public and commercial recreation opportunities. And then the rail trail providing direct public access to about one mile shoreline, which I'm sure included this parcel. And then in the recommendation section or the goals was to enhance and expand public recreational access to our lakes and streams. So it's, you know, making this a park or public beach is in line with our master plan goal. I know there was also some concerns about a comment I made at the CIP meeting about possibly closing Tacoma Beach. That's something that could be up for discussion here. It was solely based on the, the safety issues and the cost of, of looking at that. At that, um, crosswalk, but it's something that can definitely be discussed at this level.
Does the board wish to start the conversation?
Yeah, I, I have some just general questions. Um, so I, I know that it's generally good to comply with your zoning, but we know along the lake that about zero of our lots match. Uh, that includes Crystal and Mascoma, so I guess, uh, my personal sentiment is if we were to sell, because that was what the public wants to do. Um, that I would, I guess I personally like to see it sold separately because it will garner more revenue for us. Um, I only see this going two ways. Either we, everybody knows now from the big puh-ah on the list serve that this is a public access parcel. So we either make it so people can use it responsibly or we sell it. That's my two. So we have two choices before us. I don't really see a middle ground.
Um, my fifteen years as a selectman, this topic has come up frequently. And the consensus has always been amongst the select board, I think, that boy, this would be a great recreational opportunity. I will also say that at no time did members of the Board of Selectmen by fifteen years even conceive of closing Tacoma Beach. So I think those are two extremely distinct issues. Uh, and I feel that this is, the, the Johnston property, Johnson Drive property is a beautiful recreational opportunity. It has some complications. One of its assets is right on the rail trail. One of its liabilities is it's right on the rail trail. Um, but these, this can be surmounted, I think. And, you know, I, I visualize, uh, some, some benches and some picnic tables and swimming uh, and, and very limited infrastructure. Um, as far as, uh, Tacoma Beach goes, I mean, I hear from many people that people like to walk there. And yes, I recognize the complications and potential dangers of Route four A. Um, one thing you can do is simply close the parking lot up on the hill. That it, it's not particularly functional anyway and just make it a walk to place. With minimal upkeep. Now, the, the issue of some car careening off the road and bombing into the beach, that is a concern. Things happen, but I would say in the seventy-five years or so we've, we've owned it, that hasn't happened. Um, I think, you know, Hanover has some wonderful crossing lights. You hit them and they go flashing really bright and those are things that cost fifty thousand.
That's what they were recommending, yes.
And they're not paying for them for us because they don't want to pay for anything on their own road.
Well, the, the cost of those are coming down. I don't want to say those would cost fifty thousand, but I would, I would guess if we put the street lights as recommended by the state that that would.
But I, I think one of the problems Tacoma Beach is simply where the parking lot is, where the stairs come down and people are trying to cross the street at probably the worst possible spot. And so close the road that goes up to the parking lot and simplify it. And maybe someday someone will figure something else out. But I'm in favor of going forward the Johnston Street property and keeping Tacoma Beach.
On the parking lot at Tacoma, which as we said is a very different parcel. I think we know, um, in the wintertime that the, the skating association has done a really nice job making, and they have a legal agreement with the town to get that cleared off and that's gotten a lot of views. So it definitely has, um, um, you know, different uses. Uh, we also know we get complaints about how many boats park and where. So there's definitely opportunities. I, I, I think, um, as the parent of a young child, the Tacoma is got two very distinct, interesting challenges, let us say. Because as your child or children are careening down the stairs and you're balancing your beach things, um, they're headed straight for the road, you're balancing stuff. So I get that that's a challenge. Um, the other thing is that the porta potty kind of ends up by the road. And so you end up kind of jockeying for small children in the porta potty. So I, I don't think, even if we closed it, people are gonna choose to do what they want to do, just like they go out to the sandbar point, right, which is a different location. That's like.
Where somebody has died.
Yes, that was one of my classmates' sons and it was awful and I don't want to have to pay for another funeral, so. Um, but I think, you know, people are always gonna make their own choices, but if the town wants to abdicate their crosswalk, that also is very and we know that's their favorite thing to do, right, is to just be like, we're not paying it anymore.
You know, instead of closing the, the, the road up to the parking lot, just tear off the, uh, the board with the stairs that go down.
I would say that might be a good plan and we can, I can work with the police chief, uh, and Jim Taylor to come up with a good plan for that, but as you all know, we need former boat trailer parking, so.
Yeah.
Keeping that and, and using that, maybe repurposing it, restriping it for, for those types.
I'd love to film the boat trailers on there. That would be something. So, it's, we haven't given you a chance.
Yeah, I guess I should make my initial thoughts. So having said it on much of the master planning activity, which is still ongoing, everybody should continue to give feedback to them. One thing we heard across the board was that people want more access to the lakes that are in town. Um, so it was very, very clear from that feedback that having an opportunity like this to create a park is something that people said they wanted as part of the master planning feedback. Now, as far as what does that look like? Uh, I happen to fall into the group that lives in the village. I walked to, you know, Tacoma Beach a lot with my kids. It's a fantastic beach for the kids. Um, we would occasionally drive and park. Um, I, I question whether we save, solve the safety concern by moving it. Um, because, um, they are, people are parking there now in the winter to walk down. If people are gonna park boats up there, they're still gonna be crossing over. Lots of bikes go through there. If we have a safety concern with that intersection, it doesn't go away by moving the beach. Um, so I don't think we addressed it that way. Um, but either way, I think the beach, I agree with John, it's completely distinct from whether or not the Johnston Drive properties make sense as a park for the town and, and for people to access the lake and, and other things. I had, you know, I have general, people who know me, I have general concerns around car-centric infrastructure. I like the idea of things and so if you were to move the beach, it becomes a completely car-centric for families that are coming because it adds about a mile to the walk if you go on the rail trail versus going to Tacoma Beach. Um, so whereas like for my house, when, when we were going there, it was like one, it was basically a mile to the beach from where we lived at the time. Those two miles round trip, which was fine for the kids, going to four, we probably would have driven. But again, the beach is a separation, but as far as the access, this is, this is another thing where in my mind, we've had really good success with whether it's, um, Lakeside Park or the NFAK or a few other projects in town of having citizen groups get together and really plan out and think about and talk to people about how to use these and how to develop these properties. And, and my initial thought is that we should move in that direction of do the emergency, do the things you have to do now. You know, if you had unsafe structures, they gotta go. If you need to put a fence in to, you know, control, because it is public access right now, if you gotta do something to control people driving down there, you do that. But as far as the longer term vision for that, I, I'd suggest that, my initial thought is that we go in the direction of having a citizen group formed to guide us in that, because in the end it is what do the people in town want, not what I want.
And just off the top of my head, think about grant opportunities and then that kind of funding. The perfect application to the Bern Foundation.
Well, I think Lakeside Park shows, I mean, the, I mean, the, the, I mean, today we received thirty-six thousand and the total of previous, the accepted ones were five, over five hundred thousand. So that's a model that has worked successfully towards town.
I, I think the other thing to think about is, while it may not be walkable to downtown, I would say we haven't really provided or focused on providing a service to the mobile home park at the bottom of the hill. And there is a, is a very dense group of housing. Those people are our residents. In the Mascoma, I understand there's also one across Lebanon line, but there are two distinct parks, parks there. And they don't have access to town other than the rail trail in terms of walking, because you don't want them walking up on the cliff area, right? So those folks would be encouraged instead of discouraged, but, um, and I think, you know, mobile homes are a valid form of housing and those people pay, pay taxes in our town. And I think giving them a way to access it's safe and appropriate. Um, I, I think that's really important. The other thing I think is really important is what I have seen on, um, various trips down there is seeing a lot of digging along the shoreline. I don't know if it's a varmit or a small dog and a lot of, um, dog, small, it looks like small dog manure and defecation. And just some signage and awareness around that and having the traffic so that, you know, I don't know if it's uh, property owners that are nearby who don't care or if it's people on the rail trail, but, you know, that's not appropriate because we know like sinobacteria and a lot of the things that we worry about in our lake and our lake quality comes from people who unfortunately make those bad choices. So I guess some of it would be usage, right? You look at your neighbor and you're like, are you gonna leave that dog manure there? Yeah, so I guess I'd like to see us focus a little, at least on doing some signage and some education around making good choices to keep the lake safe for everybody is one of our biggest assets.
Hey, we ready for some comments? Dr. Paul Fett.
First, is a, is a question to add, uh, um, the, I don't know if, uh, the Friends of the Northern Rail Trail, if one of the organizations you, um, had, uh, mentioned in support of this, I can read a, uh, um, their board's position now, which is basically for, uh, this to be a local decision and they're not supporting or opposing. Um, I can read the full one if that, that's desired, but not necessary.
I can. No, I have the same thing and it's in the packet of notes that I'll give you, but that is their position that this is a local decision. And once the local decision's made, they will work with the, if the, if the decision's to go forward, they will work with the um, state and the town to make sure that the crossing is safe.
Furthermore, um, I, uh, think that one of the mistakes that was made with the, uh, Mascoma Lakeside Park was, um, the, um, insufficient, I'll say, um, engaged, positive engagement with neighbors and abutters. Um, and, uh, I don't want to see that mistake repeating. Uh, for this property, um, to put a parking lot in for a twenty vehicle, roughly, whatever you're doing, which is close to the size of, of, uh, the Mascoma Lakeside Park or even the, uh, the one for Tacoma Beach. Uh, maybe slightly small, but not much. Um, you are going to need to do some significant improvement, not just run a grader through for a narrow driveway, which is what it is right now, um, that is going to affect the neighbors and butters of that. Right. Uh, one of which is a, uh, elderly, um, long-term, uh, resident of, uh, this town um, who has helped issues of, of his own and, uh, is concerned that, that this house is going to be taken down as a result of that. I think that, uh, we need to really engage and not nimby him or, or, um, do other issues for, for people. This needs to be a positive for the town and for our town people rather than, um, you know, by a steamroller. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed Barbara Jones, the yellow light is on. Barbara Jones, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So I'm, I've made a nice little list. Um, the town manager mentioned casually that the beach had sand in it. There's not one grain of sand down there, so that's an issue, a huge issue. You call something a beach, it has to have sand. I'm, I'm concerned about the safety. Uh, I talked to Phil Neely and fire and rescue would have a really hard time getting down there if you had an accident or need. There's no cell service down there. You talk about the, the, um, traffic on four A as four thousand cars a day. Thor has twelve thousand five hundred cars a day. You talk about the, the, um, mobile home parks. This, whether you know it or not, for the last decade, two decades, these kids already are crossing the road to use this as a beach. The only difference would be that you would be maintaining it. You, the town has, uh, had a big surprise this year that they had this land. We've been maintaining it. The homeowners have been maintaining it for ten years, at least, over ten years. So it's all been working. People have been using it already as a nice park. So some of these ideas, it would be nice to talk to the, uh, butters and the homeowners before you made all these big plans. Should I continue with my list?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Continue.
All right. Um, there.
Have to keep it moving.
All right. Well, I'm gonna rest my case for a while. Let somebody else tell you how they feel.
Dean Patton.
So I'm all for doing new and exciting things in town and all that sort of thing. But right now I feel like we have a way too many irons in the fire. We have these big capital projects that are gonna be done that needs a lot of focus, a lot of attention, uh, details, that sort of thing. My vote would be to, if you need to remove the structures, remove the structures. Just do the very basic. And I can tell you, and luckily I'm not the director of DPW, I'd be pulling my hair out to think that now I've got even another place to mow a lawn, to keep up the road, to do that sort of thing. We can hardly keep up with what we have in town and always have enough help to keep up the roads and everything else. And I just feel like we keep stretching and stretching and stretching and never doing a lot of things really well. So I think we need to slow down, just keep that land as a basic use for now and put some more thought into what we really can do there or what we should do there. And I'm also nervous about cars crossing the rail trail when you can't really see in one direction. Um, so I think we really need to put some more thought into this and maybe put our focus on our capital projects that everybody so wanted. And now we've all voted for it and have to pay for it. So I think it's time to put this on a back burner a bit and focus on capital projects.
Thank you. So, yes, you had your hand up.
Yes, I'm Barbara Rule. I also live on Johnston Drive, which is a private driveway, which is not a road. And it's been used as a driveway so that myself, Barbara Jones, and the elderly gentleman who's been there forever, George Butler, my uncle, um, has a safe place to walk up and down that road, walk with his cats. It is a pedestrian walkway, except for the vehicles who live on Johnston Drive and the people that live in Lebanon, uh, camps at the end of Johnston Drive to get to their camps. That was the reason for the road and also that common right of way includes a thirty-foot right of way for people on Johnston Drive to have beach access for ourselves. And your plan to put a parking lot goes right on top of that. And also putting on a parking lot, um, is directly diminishes the action items for the citizens of infield to consider that was put out by the Conservation Commission, meaning CANTI, um, to keep wildlife corridors from further being blocked by roads and development, to cease from throwing cans and bottles and other trash on your vehicles onto roads. Take your trash home and place in your containers. You are promoting this behavior by wanting to put in a parking lot, put in a venue for whatever, picnicking and parties or weddings. None of that is in the direction that I think that this town should go to preserve the beauty of that land. As you said, it's beautiful and it also should be a walk-in beach. I'm not opposed to it being used as a beach. It is a beach now and it is a walk-in beach. The people in the trailer parks across the street from it are the ones using it daily, riding their bikes up and down and walking. And we'll see these people every day enjoying it, just as it is. And it is a beautiful place and, uh, the rail trail is, uh, offers a place for people to walk on in. If they wanna drive and park, they could park down at Ice House Road where there's already parking. If they want to drive and park, they could park down at Ice House Road where there's already parking available for people. Why they don't use it, I don't know. They prefer to park on my uncle's lawn or Barbara Jones's lawn and just walk on down to the rope swing the other direction, not to park and swim. But they like to park and go down to the rope swing. So there's a lot of pedestrian activity and I just feel that you think you're going to take Johnston Drive, our driveway and turn it into a public road. There's going to be a lot of resistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, can I just ask a kind of fine question? So we have the three leased buildings, one which is not being vacated, the two that were vacated, those used the road, they were not walk-ins for it, right?
They used the road and we have four total.
And we have the corner of the piece that's been ours right along in full. Yeah, okay, so that's the road.
The gentleman in back, could you give us your name first?
Yes, Greg Sandborn.
Thank you.
So here's what, I happen to have known the Johnsons since about nineteen sixty. I'm just familiar with that driveway throughout that town. It is in fact a narrow drive, one car wide, maybe ten feet or so. If you're going to want a fifteen to eighteen foot parking lot on that acre and a half the town has, then if it opens the town, widen that driveway so you can have two-way traffic. This has got to be on the order of twenty-four feet wide. On, given the configuration of the drive and the houses there, you are going to have to expand the right of way. So you're taking out most of the yard and driveway of the larger cabin most downhill. And you are going to basically have another four mile of town road maintained. And you are going to have the problem of people speeding on that. And that is a road that is very largely used by pedestrians and people on bicycles. These site distances all rather poor. I'm trying to say that the cost to the community in terms of increased cost and liability and risk, do not make it desirable to actually allow the public to drive vehicles down there. Instead, the smart thing to do is a minimally invasive approach. And just to leave it largely as it is, after you pull out the old buildings and add some picnic tables or something. That seems to be largely what people want and that certainly can work there. A bigger parking lot, you got to upgrade the road.
Let's comment. Yes, like.
I did a little research this afternoon. August twenty-third, nineteen fifty-eight, Masco Beach was purchased by the town of Enfield from last year.
What year was that?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah.
And just for the record, I was thirteen years old at the time and utilizing it. Over the years, it has been utilized by a lot of people. We got less people in Enfield now than we had ten years ago. And in nineteen fifty-eight, we had a lot more people because of a lot more businesses in Enfield, Metropolis back then. So the safety concern, I think, is good. I think a simple solution to protect the people that are on the beach, put Jersey barriers up, take down those guardrails, put Jersey barriers up. The town of Enfield just acquired a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in the state of New Hampshire. Do the highway thing, do some of that money, put flashing lights up. And I think that, that would solve, that'd be a quick fix problem. And it would do away with any concerns of anybody running off there and, and hurting somebody. As far as the Johnson property goes, I think there's too many variables. And I think to echo what Jean Patton said, just a quick calculation. This year, we passed a budget, five point eight million for Whitney Hall, seven point two billion for the safety complex. We had a budget of over seven and a half million. Plus, we have a few million dollars holding in advance on water and sewer. It's been two years old, we haven't had a broke ground yet. And we have all these projects going. And there's a lot of money being spent by a lot of people in town. So I think I would recommend put the brakes on, on spending and take care of what we got right now and focus on what we got to do for projects and get them done. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask a quick question. Can I assume that really nobody here is in the least interest of the town selling that property?
I am.
Other than Dan Kylie. And White.
You're supposed to sell the Shed Street property back when they built this building, they never did.
We're very close.
You see, I'm always haunted by the fact that years ago, we could have bought the head of the lake property.
Oh, absolutely.
And the town voted it down.
I was talking.
And so I'm, I'm against voting down.
They voted down.
Lake property.
What about the Marina?
And the Marina. Yes. Mr. Kylie.
I'll take my two minutes. Because what you just said may be true. We didn't buy the Marina, we didn't buy the head of the lake, we voted on at a town meeting not to do it. And it may have had nothing to do with money. It may have to have done with, we like Shaqoma Beach. And we're not looking for another beach. And boy, I would like to see us get a million dollars for that land or five hundred thousand dollars for that land. And somebody build a building there and all of a sudden we could get thirty thousand dollars a year in taxes, which is even more than the additional amount we put into CIP every year. You know, I can remember not, not getting on the select board, but we sat on three properties on Grafton Pond Road because we waited for the market to go up for ten years when we could have gotten taxes for ten years that would have been worth more than the land was worth. So I'm really in favor of selling the land.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, someone online, thank you.
Lindsay.
Lindsay.
Lindsay. Lindsay Smith. And I just, I'm not in favor of selling it. I think that, that the mistakes of not buying land are not a reason to sell land. I think that this is a great piece of property and I would entertain the thought of, one second. Sorry. That I'd like to, to instead have a consideration that the, that the property is already being used. I think there's like, there's this, this proposal and I appreciate the creativity, but it's being used. And so how do we enhance the way it's being used and think more in the future? I think what Eric said really struck a chord with me. We're always car-centric. We're always car-centric. Why, why do we have to focus everything around cars? We have a lot of cyclists, we have pedestrians, the rail trail is a great resource. And as a cyclist and as a, as a runner and as someone who travels around the country riding rail trails, they're safe spaces and so to not add cars to them. Pulling Johnston driveway, and it's a driveway, is not safe. It's not, it's terrible to pull back out onto four. It's a blind curve coming around as traffic comes into, coming from Lebanon. Doesn't matter if you're turning right or left, you just, you have to gun it and close your eyes. Like it's, it's terrible and we're just, we're going to create more, we're going to create more problems there. I think it's a great asset as far as the master plan and we can enhance it and say, you know, ride your bike. You know, we can have a low impact, like, and a high impact at the same time. Like we can be environmentally safe, we can have this canoe to this, to this area. It's sort of like the secret beach and then save the sandy area with a lifeguard over at Shaqoma and fix that intersection. You don't avoid fixing the intersection by just looking somewhere else. So I think that there's all the right ideas are out there. I don't think we sell it. I think it's an asset to the, to the community. I think we don't want to develop every single piece of land, which is also part of the master plan. It's preserving our green space. I would hate to see a building up there. I think that's a terrible idea. I think that's just, but I think we already have it and we should just celebrate it for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Steve Patton had his hand up.
So I would like to see this property left as our green space, not improved. Few comments about how we're going to get trucks in there to do the basics. For one, you have a roof for access problem. Then you have a fire truck turnaround problem. Then are we going to take a land by eminent domain to fix the road? Couple of things. We have fiber optics along the rail trail. I know that they wouldn't allow me to back a truck across the fiber optics. So I wait till nobody was looking.
We didn't hear you.
We have a trail crossing that they wouldn't allow me to put a truck across. So I really hope that you can get permission to put that demo machinery, machinery onto this property, demolish the buildings and leave it alone.
Thank you. Thank you. Mom, you've had your hand up before.
I'd like to say, I think a lot of people have touched on things that, that I will probably say anyway. One I did want to ask that was mentioned, the money from the highway, could, is, is that something that we could use to improve as intersection? Does that count as, as maintenance or improvement? Because that might be a good way to use it. Second of all, my children learn to swim at Shaqoma Beach and we just drove up, dropped the kids, all their stuff off. There's always somebody there happy to keep an eye on them while mom goes and parks the car and walks down across the road without the children. So that is one way of solving that problem.
We don't do that.
I also.
We don't do that anymore. They put you in jail for things like that now. Oh, they call the police if you leave your kid in the car.
I was struck by something Ed said about the time commitment to the broadband question and other comments that people brought up. We have a lot on our plate right now. I personally think that broadband, better broadband here might improve more lives for more days. And I prefer that we focus on, on that, just along with some of the capital improvement problems. And I think it's been, one of the things that's been really great in the past few years is the increase in, not only, like, going back to the car question, but also non-motorized ways of enjoying the lake. We've got the sailboats, we've got people skating. I know people who fish here wish there were fewer boats, fewer motorized things. So anything I think that we can do to increase what I call the quiet use of the lake, I think is something that we should encourage. And this just seems like a really great place for people to be able to do that. And I don't, I completely agree with Lindsay. I think we should just let it go as it is, let it be used as it is, do the necessary improvements to make it safe, not have an attractive nuisance, not a lawsuit because, you know, the, the building fell down. And let it just be sort of part organically of our community the way it already is.
Thank you. I, I'm going to limit conversation now or comments for most people who haven't the chance to comment on this topic yet. So who's that, chief of police back there? That's Shirley Green, oh. You guys look the same.
I support Ed on this for the, for a second beach. I think that there, there's a couple of factors here. One, I think that given a second location for a mother or father with several kids, an option of going someplace where they don't have to cross Route four A in traffic is great. I think that, two, the word is out now, the town, so we have a responsibility to upgrade that road because it's going to get traveled more often now, regardless, the word is out. And three, I'm kind of chugging here, listening a lot about, you know, it's used a lot, you know, this and that. I receive no less than half a dozen to a dozen phone calls a year from residents of the trailer park about, can we use that? Because somebody just threw me off and said it was private property. So let's, you know, I think Eric's got a great suggestion. Let's put together some committee of people that are interested in this, that can put together several ideas, maybe even explore funding for grants and such, come back to the select board with several options of what we can do down there. I think there's a lot of ifs or whats or, you know, rumors and, and bad information and good information. I think that it needs to be fully explored so the town can get the most out of this piece of property for our, for all of residents, not just a select few.
Thank you. Shirley, you got your hand up?
Yes. I know there's a lot to consider. And, and the last thing I'd like to have seen have happened is to have that land sold. Because we have given up a lot of lake property over, over time. I'd like to see it become a welcoming area for residents, to have another place to use. The water in this state is owned by the public. And there are only a very few of us that own land along that water. We don't own the lake or the water. We just own the land and we have access to it anytime we want. And we have an obligation to whenever there's an opportunity to give more people access to the enjoyment of that water to do it.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Linda Jones. I'd like to speak in favor of keeping the stairs over at Shaqoma Beach because I used to skid down the rocks rolling where the stairs are. You had to hold on to branches and your stuff.
Oh, no.
And kids. And if it was wet, it was a mud slick. And so I loved it when the stairs came in, nice, solid railing, hold on to the stairs. And we keep referring to the Johnston Drive area as a beach. It's actually muck kind of clay. You sink into it, there isn't sand there. You go out above fifty feet and then it drops off suddenly to very deep. And it also has a lot of waves that come in. So small toddlers would have to be watched very carefully because the boats set up, you know, wakes and then the wind whips them up and they, they can come in like that, something that doesn't happen on Shaqoma Beach. So I would really encourage you to improve Shaqoma Beach, not close the parking lot. Because I see, there used to be a lot of jockeying for trailer parking. And if you get a big truck and a big boat, that takes up about a quarter of the lot. And, and if there's some event, there's just no parking unless you can go up there. And it's paved up that hill now. No more rolling rocks to walk down.
But isn't life so boring? Yes.
Tracy Young. I agree with Eric's suggestion that it ought to be a community group that takes their time and puts some thoughts together, perhaps recommendations to the selectmen if money is to be spent in the future to develop the property at Johnston Drive. But I think working with the butters, the people who have used the park in the past, I think some good ideas can emerge over a period of a year or two of planning without doing anything in the immediate future. As to the Shaqoma Beach thought, my idea is get all the trailers out of the beach parking lot and make them park up above, every one of them. At Sunapee, there is no parking near the boat launch. They all have a hike. So get all the trailers out of there and allow people to park in that parking lot if they're going to use the beach.
The lady behind Tracy.
Julie, I don't disagree with anybody except for Sally. And I'd hate to see a hotel go in there instead of, you know, public use. I don't quite understand the term private road when the town owns the property at the end. It would seem we would have to have usable access to that. I have lots of concerns about coming off of four to go in there. I live way past where I can walk to Shaqoma. I cannot walk to Masco Park either. I'm out by Enfield Center and I don't feel I have access to. And I don't feel I have access to the lake. I live here. I pay taxes, but I feel excluded to lake use. I don't own a boat. I want to get a boat and get into the water. I gotta get a trailer and a new car. That's a little expensive for getting out of the water. I haven't done it. I like the idea of the broad beach. I do want a beach that's usable. And it sounds like there's some issues with what's in the water. I don't know much about any of this. But I do want to learn more and I do think it is something that has a huge value in the community to people like me and to property values. Um, I just think this is something that's delightful. But I don't think it's simple. I'm not too, I don't want anybody to think, I just, oh my, this is the best idea ever. We have things that need to be thought about and, and considered. And the neighbors need to be considered to whatever degree we can do that. Um, I don't think leaving that completely undeveloped is good for our community.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, someone in the back?
The other one behind Tracy.
Yes.
I know that Ed, you mentioned numbers of traffic on four A. Do you have the numbers for the traffic on four? I went in turn the other day. I just had.
About 12,000.
And it was, I, I ended up going down and turning around and them coming.
Yeah, now we can look at it four is definitely a busy road and something.
She had the state figures, it was 12,000.
Yeah, I always kind of run the dog.
Yeah. Also, the insurance cost for Tacoma, do you know what that runs currently and what it runs currently for Johnston Drive?
We already own them, so it's already aggregated into our insurance cost. Yeah, we've owned it for the 2,000 points, so it's been aggregated.
Ma'am, could we have your name for the note taker?
It's a Julie Herman.
Okay, sorry.
Victory.
Okay, two more comments and then I, I really need to close this because we have another public hearing and other business. Seeley.
I just want to make a suggestion that um, in the meantime, I know Roy's saying that it's, it's out the worst out. Um, I would think we should be concerned about maybe put some signage up. And so it's not, uh, so we kind of steer people to take care of it. Uh, because I think you don't want to get overrun. We don't want beer cans. We don't want all this stuff going on. So in the meantime.
Okay. Last comment.
Um, I agree with just about everything that's been said. I think that um, after me, please, I'm going to ask Barbara Jones or maybe before me, as long as I'm allowed to speak. I'm going to ask Barbara Jones to clarify because as I understand it from her, she owns that lower section of Johnston Road is on her property. She has a right of way along the rail trail. But if she owns that lower section of road, then it's going to be the town's responsibility to take her property, to lease her property, to buy her property. So that, it's accessibility and I need.
Okay.
I think we would let the town.
Yeah, we're going to let the town figure this out. That's not a topic for discussion here. I mean, probably a lawyer is going to have to figure this out.
Yeah, I would like to see a public beach be developed by taking somebody's property.
I, I don't believe that that has come up in this discussion tonight, nor do I think, I'm just speaking for myself here. But I don't see this board of selectmen as ready to engage in that kind of activity.
No, I can tell you, there's been a lot of research, a lot of outreach to neighbors, a lot of stuff that would have to happen. As I stated in the beginning of this, this is the initial conversation. And if the, if the sentiment was no, we want to sell it, then there's no need to do any of all that work. So if we want to move forward, I agree with Eric. I think a, a committee to talk this through is a good thing. We're coming into the winter months. There's, there's no hurry to move forward with this project.
Can I make my point please, before we close this up? Um, first of all, I think I'm, I'm very much in support of keeping Tacoma Beach. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned about Tacoma Beach is it is the only public access for safe swimming on the lake. Because the natural pocket of that area um, has, children have had swimming lessons there. There's deep water swimming on the opposite side of where the, where it's roped off. Boats coming through there have to naturally slow down either way to go under the bridge. There's no wake there. So if we lose Tacoma Beach, we, I guess, not every, not every recreational area on the lake has to be the same. Not every area has to have a beach. Not every, every area has to have swimming. Certain areas are good for certain things. This beach, this uh, Johnston Beach is a beautiful location. It's a great picnic area. I'm concerned because of the development that people have talked about that will be required for the road and how that will impact the rail trail. I'm mostly concerned because if you're talking 18 cars, that means uh, we're talking about all residents, not a select few. What will happen is you'll drive your car down the road and those spots are easily going to be filled and you don't have access. I'm also concerned because if you're talking about renting it out for a private party, where do those people park? Do they take part of the 18 spaces that other residents who just want to use the beach and not rent it out? You know, that's an issue. Also, I'm concerned about the idea that um, we're going to uh, charge a non-resident and we want to discourage out of town residents. That really upsets me. That was said just tonight.
It was said we could. We charge now at Tacoma.
We do.
How much have we collected this year?
How much should we have collected?
How much have?
So charged for both.
Folks, I am, I'm really going to have to close this part of the meeting.
You're well past your few minutes.
We had a limit of two minutes. We've been very flexible. So could you make your last point, please?
This is going to take a lot more development than is really uh, financially. Um, and if you put in some places, some people are going to rent out, yes, that's going to make the town money. But it's going to completely change what you have. It is a pristine opportunity for Enfield right now.
And I think, you know, Ed, Ed was sort of talking in, in vague generalities there. And, and again, this is why the committee that Eric has mentioned is so crucial.
Do you need for one more comment?
Yes.
I just want to thank Ed and I think Roy was part of this as well, identifying the safety. So I think it's fantastic that we have staff that are bringing ideas to the town, that engage the public and move us in direct, let us make decisions about where we want to go. So I really want to just thank the staff that brought forward some ideas for us to discuss. This is one of the best public discussions we've had recently. And so I just want to make sure they know it's appreciated that they're bringing forward ideas to the town uh, for us to consider and discuss.
I have a, a little bit. My, I guess my request would be something like the step in posts are really inexpensive with caution tape or something temporarily. I have a bit large concern about the detriment to the lake with people driving down. And since I have been down probably more than most people around here, um, I just, I'm concerned about that. And if there's resident concerns, then certainly seven posts with a laminated sign as a stopgap, right? Because I do think we do want to be respectful. I absolutely agree that um, Mascomah Lakeside Park and the committee haven't always been that kind to the neighbors. I've gotten a lot of complaints about that, particularly about the trash and the dog refuse. And so I want to be very mindful about, you know, carry and carry out is not working, right? We've learned that the, the neighbors are picking up the stuff. So we don't want that same thing to happen. And the cat's out of the proverbial bag. The more we talk about it, the more people are going to go down. So just making sure we have a plan, a plan in place so that we help enable people to be good neighbors and to make good decisions.
I'd like to simply thank everyone for coming. It's been a wonderful attendance. Uh, lots of good uh, discussions were had, lots of good comments were made. And we guarantee you, this will not be the last meeting of this kind. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion about the committee?
I don't think we need to make a motion. It's an operation decision, so Ed would handle that for us.
Well, we can talk about that at a future meeting.
And we don't need a motion to close a public hearing. This isn't a public hearing, yes. So next coming up is the, awarding the public safety building contract. And we have a, a motion here.
So the MPAC committee, as you know, done a lot of work since we, the design team together. Um, we kind of built this RFQ process that we went out to RFQ asking any firms that we could get ahold of to submit their qualification to let us know that they're qualified and wanting to build our public safety buildings. Once we got those five back, we narrowed that down to three and we sent out an RFQs with uh, pricing in it, um, to break down pricing and make sure we understand how the, how the contractors compared to each other on, you know, architectural pricing, engineering pricing, those types of things, the fees that we're going to have to pay. Um, from that, we ended up with two final candidates, Nigley and Chase and Black River Designs who um, combined to, to come forward and then bred low. Um, we did invite them last Tuesday to, to come here in this public safety room. And we, we interviewed each one of them for about an hour and a half of peace, talked through them. Um, had some really good discussions, um, listened to some innovation, different things they wanted to do. The MPAC committee then had a, a discussion for about a half hour, a little more after both of those interviews. Instead of taking an open voice vote, because I feel some people can be persuaded just by the voting itself. After our discussion, I handed out pieces of paper. We took a blind ballot vote. That vote came back six to one in recommendation of Nigley and Chase. Um, we talked a little bit about that before we left. And um, I did a little bit more due diligence as I emailed you. I've talked with Nigley and Chase a little bit. I talked with Reed Burgwal, who does this for a living with the college. And then I um, talked a little bit, one of the, one of the hangups was how they were doing design build for mechanical type systems. So I talked with um, Travis Boucher, who's on the, on the committee, who does mechanical electrical plans on a daily basis. We talked through that process. And I'm comfortable coming forward now with the recommendation from the MPAC design team and myself to award the contract to Nigley and Chase and Black River Designs.
I'd like to start by thanking the MPAC Part Two Committee um, for their very hard work. I know it's a, a different subset of folks um, who are very talented. And we were very fortunate to have that kind of talent do this for us. So my thanks to them. Do you want to make a motion or not?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a design build contract with Nigley and Chase Construction Company and Black River Designs for the purposes of completing the design and construction of the town of Enfield's public safety building, not to exceed the total construction amount, excluding the land purchase of $7,259,066. And hereby authorize the town manager or his designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Uh, second thought?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, policy relative to face coverings. Mr. Kylie Models for us. Thank you. Um, Ed, you want to introduce it?
Yeah, so we've actually passed this through the select board a couple of times. We made a few modifications to it. Um, in general, it just says that we will follow CDC guidelines on um, transmission risk factors. They do still put out risk factors for, by county, whenever state across the country. So we could look up drafting county today and see where it is. And instead of debating over and over as we continue to move through the, the COVID pandemic, I would recommend, or we put forward that we would just move to um, mandating face coverings in meetings such as this when we move into a high-risk transmission situation for the CDC. And then there's also a little guidance in there, just authorizing me as town manager to, to work with staff on a employment type basis.
You know, there, there's some, you know, more details, like notwithstanding the above per CDC guidelines, this order does not require children under two years of age to wear face coverings. Face covering is also not required to be worn by any person, but show that a medical professional advised them that wearing a face cover may pose a risk to them for health-related purposes. Um, it, it's a, I think a pretty sensible set of directions uh, to only be um, set by the town when the risk is high.
So I'll be the ironic one. I'm wearing a face mask because those of you who know me know I've had a lung infection for two months. Um, and somehow I've not managed to get COVID, but I, it's very scary, right? When someone coughs in public right now. So I really feel for people and to set a good example, if I'm having a day with bad episodes, I have my inhaler on me and that. So that being said, my big concern with setting a policy like this is that it has no teeth. So there's, there's no, there's no carrot, right? Cause there's no like, you get a sticker, um, and there's no stick. So we sell people and then people wind to us and they call the police. What happens? I guess that's my question. Um, is it effective?
It is only based on public media.
It only, yeah. And so do we toss them out and do we have any rights? I, I don't know. I'm just asking that question because I, I, I just, I worry about things like that. Um.
We do have rights. It's a little bit hard unless we're asking for a doctor's note on the medical part of that. Most of the time we've been taking people's word for that. But you know, when I started here, we had a mask mandate and most people were very respectful of that. And I, I think this is just something to give guidance. So we don't need to keep talking about it every time a few people in town have COVID and learn about it.
But, but, and, and he makes a very good point there. Uh, relative to face coverings in public buildings. Those are buildings owned and controlled by the town of Enfield.
So I'm confused about this, I guess, because so is this saying then that, I know Ed's saying meetings. So like if I was to go to the town hall, then are employees supposed to be wearing masks or not?
Employees will be based on my decision when we're moving forward. You know, in the town office, we're wearing them right now because we were exposed to somebody. So out of an abundance of caution, I've asked employees in the town office to wear masks.
So just the town office or other?
This would be when we move to high risk, that anytime we're gathering public or we're in tight spaces inside of a public building, that we would be asking people to wear masks.
Right. But I know you were just saying that you're having your employees in the town office are wearing masks right now. So is that just the town offices wearing masks and this DPW and other departments or?
Right now, it's just the town office because that's where the exposure.
And just so I can hold it up, this is, you'll recognize it from the CDC website. If you've ever been online, this little block should look very familiar. It's the one we refer to. I know Dr. Bofe has referenced it a number of times, as have I. So just to give you an idea, there is a little chart in there.
Yeah, and I was just trying to give a frame of reference. Instead of us trying to make an arbitrary decision whether we should or shouldn't, we go to the source, the CDC website, which will say whether we have a high risk of transmission or.
You know, if this is imposed and we're having this meeting, we'd all have to wear masks.
If it was high risk.
If it was high risk, yes. On the other hand, if you're going to Jake's, doesn't matter. Yeah, Shirley.
I was just going to say, uh, I usher at New London Bar during the summer and they had the same policy. And they did have to change it a few times down, even those are the risks. And it did work very well.
Great. Doctor?
Well, I mean, I think that basing this on the CDC guidelines uh, uh, makes a lot of sense. You know, personally, uh, we're more conservative than that and, and wear masks inside all the time with anybody. Um, or preferably outside, you don't have to. Um, I think that, that um, you don't have to go wait for a meeting or do other things all the time. Uh, makes a lot of sense. Um, and you know, I mean, personally, I've made the choice and I think other people should, but don't have, aren't required to um, consider um, others as well as their own health. to consider others as well as their own health and their decisions about wearing masks. Regular paper surgical masks, like some of us are wearing, are apparently about sixty percent effective in reducing our developing COVID in the next two weeks. If we are exposed to somebody's new mask. And Ninety-five, which I'm wearing and a few other people here are wearing, are eighty-three percent. I'm gonna do everything I can to increase the odds that I, we don't get that.
Absolutely.
I just have, if, if the board is so inclined to enact this, I just, one grammatic one, I should have sent it to you earlier, sorry. You know, when you have the parentheses, select board to call it out, we should use the same spelling and capitalization. So just a little bit further, which may get nearer that one spot. It's like one line down. I think other than that, I don't have any objection to the language itself. I just wanted to know what people's thoughts were on that held policy and what we're doing. It's, I'm sorry, it's on the first page.
I'm a school teacher, so I'm around people all the time. Sometimes I wear masks, sometimes I don't. Depends on the situation.
I mean, we've been doing masks outside in the public pantry just to reduce risk. If you see me walking around on Ninety-five outside, there's a good chance I've had a coughing, but just let me go.
Stay away.
Someone gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the policy relative to face coverings as presented with the one correction.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we already did the 2023 town meeting location.
And I think that takes us to a motion to adjourn.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, oh, oh.
Put back. Hey.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, God.
Now we have public comment.
Public comment.
Not on the agenda.
On items not on the agenda. Well. I think everyone's commented. Yes?
Thank you. So I have a deep concern that I brought to the board more than once, and I'm back here again. My, in looking at all the expenditures that has been approved in the town the last year, the one that really troubles me, there's two that really trouble me, is the roof on the community building. I know there's been funds appropriated, I think, for three years in a row. And all that involves a stripping shingles off, putting shingles back on. Here we are, almost to the end of September, and I don't know if anybody's looked at that roof, but it's terrible. An answer to it, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, that's been RFQed, and it's on the schedule to be done.
When?
It should be October, I think, at the latest. We've already made the payment.
I've been told it's been something on the schedule before, and it's never happened.
Okay.
My other concern is, is the people that work in City Hall, are the town offices and the library. Is, when I was at town meeting this spring, when the pitch was made to do the renovations on Whitney Hall, one of the factors that was offered was during the cold weather that the town goes through a barrel of oil every three days. That's two hundred and seventy-five gallons of oil every three days. And at one point, they ran out of oil, and they had to close the town offices because it was too cold. Now, also know that the place is like a barn, so even when the furnace is running, it's not comfortable. So the space eaters use. So now we get into the situation where electricity is gone. So we've got, the town has got a tremendous amount of money involved here. I just did a quick calculation. So if they go through two hundred and seventy-five gallons of oil every three days, in a month, they're burning eleven hundred and sixty-eight dollars in oil. And in six months, the heating season would be over seventy thousand dollars. So in the town warrant, if the building's renovation didn't pass, there was a hundred and fifty thousand in there. And the article read, "For Whitney Hall Emergency Repairs." So it doesn't say repairs. It says, "This is an emergency" because it's leaking, the water's coming in, it's rotting from the inside. So I guess what my, my question is, is a taxpayer in a concern for the people that have to work in that structure, what is being done so they can be comfortable for this winter? Has anything done, been done to repair these emergency leaks that are on the roof and about the heating? Thank you.
Okay, we've been, we've been looking into the roof. We're still having problems getting roofings. Like contractors, we have sent up some of our employees that have done roofing in the past to look at minimizing the damage over this winter. And we're working on, as you guys know, finishing the loan, which cannot be done until January for, you know, governmental regulation reasons. And then we can move forward with the contractor rebuild with him.
With something like winterizing, just simple old-school throw plastic on the windows? Just because those windows are old. I know it's not pretty. I know it doesn't look nice. But anything to minimize the draft, because draft makes you feel colder. It's not super. I don't know if there's anything minimal we could do.
Yeah, we can look at some of that. We have, you know, some of the employees that do, are in colder places, have heated floor mats and those types of things that help keep them comfortable.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm headed at, that roof needs to be repaired. I'm saying you people, because you're the ones leading the pack here. You spend thousands of dollars every day of our taxpayers' money. There's no reason that those people in that building, employees, should have to work through another winter with that situation. Now, my roof leaks, I can tell you, and I know what the thing is about getting people to fix roofs. I'd have it done within two weeks. And I bet you I can find somebody to fix the town hall roof in the two years. I'm not paying for it, but I can find somebody to fix it via reputable outfit.
I think the question is the slate. So if you have any recommendations, definitely give them to Ed.
For slate?
Yeah, slate.
We can find somebody. I'll try to find somebody.
That'd be fabulous.
But I, well, I guess my concern is to get something done before the snow comes. And we've had all summer, and nothing's been done. And, and if it hadn't been air-macked in emergency, then I wouldn't have thought much of it. Replace the roof like on the community building. It's not an emergency. It probably will be. Thank you.
I have a quick question about the town hall. How's the air quality there these days?
So we haven't had it tested?
Yeah. I've had comments from some people who've, you know, been through there. It's a little musty.
It's a little musty. We worked on some of that. Again, I'm trying to balance that with not spending a bunch of money for something we're gonna tear up next year.
Understandable, right.
So, I mean, we have done a few things. We've talked about getting a little bit more air filtration and a dehumidifier.
Dehumidifier, probably would be a big... You know, we do have to worry about the...
Shit, not that long ago. They have been too wet and too long. That's my guess. Yeah.
That'll happen, yeah. Yes.
Just a request or considerations for Enfield is please do not eliminate any parking spaces anywhere, whether or not you think you need them up at Chakoma, anywhere. Because I see the development of this town, especially if you're gonna focus on downtown development, really a problem because there's no place for people to park. And I also see that if you take, if the places that people access have parking, then, and if they're like places, for instance, up on the, above Route 4A, obviously that's used in the wintertime, and keep the stairs so that people can park up there. They can walk down the stairs. They can, according to recreation, they can use ice skating on the way. If they park up there, but there's no stairs, then they have to walk down the road. And that's really steep and icy. So...
I think those stairs might be a little tricky in the winter, too.
But I...
Less tricky.
Less tricky, yeah. And I also see that, to me, the beauty of Chakoma and, and Lakeside Park being so close in proximity is that, okay, this place is too crowded. I have that place to go to if I'm gonna access the lake. If you take out that place, you're gonna, and parking, or either or both, you're gonna create a more of a parking problem and more of a crowding problem at, at Lakeside Park. So those are just some requests and considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
And after that, I want to get rid of a parking space, which is in front of the library. You've got two parking spaces there. You come out of town hall, and you cannot see to your left if somebody's parking there.
I love...
I've brought it up three or four times. I don't drive a van, so I can't see over a van.
You're right.
I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but you, you have to get on into the road in order to see if there's traffic coming from the left. And if we could just move the park, well, the sign is strange anyway because it don't, it said, "Don't park between the signs." And the other side is down at the corner of Main Street and Route 4A. So I guess the police is illegally parking every day. But, so if we could change that to, "Don't park either the corner," and move it back a space, everybody would be able to see when they're going out of town hall.
I agree.
Thank you very much, sir.
No, I didn't, yeah, it is hard.
I am now gonna make a motion to adjourn.
That was on the table.
Then I'll second it.
I'll second it, whatever.
All in favor?
Emily will pick someone.
Whatever.